Mr. Wasworth, would you do the prayers for us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth.
Good evening, City Council. And to those who have joined this meeting, this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting is being held electronically in accordance to Governor Whitmer's executive order, which allows a meeting of a public body to be held electronically by telephone or video conferencing in a manner in which both the general public and the members of the public body may participate by electronic means. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. Enter the meeting ID number eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight, followed by the pound sign. To join the meeting online from the Zoom meeting app, click on the URL link and enter the meeting ID when prompted. Again, the meeting ID number is eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the city council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the agenda. And at this time, Mr. Chair, we will read tonight's council meeting agenda. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerk's report, seven treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, twelve communication, and number thirteen adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
We have a second?
Support.
Okay. The motion by Mr. Councilman Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda, two A, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will move to, um, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held October the twelfth of two thousand and twenty.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, which was held October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, approval of the minutes from the special meetings held on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty at six o'clock. There's a study session regarding the Wade and Ecorse intersection in land acquisition. And at six thirty PM, there was a study session to discuss the retiree health plan.
So moved for approval of minutes from the special meetings held on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wasworth, for my approval of the minutes for special meeting, which was held on October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the meeting, uh, on the agenda this evening. Um, number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair at this time going to recognize Councilwoman Abdo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
I have two memorial resolutions. The first one I would like is a memorial resolution for Don Treeter.
Support.
Don Treeter grew up in Romulus. He and his wife raised their family here in Romulus. Longtime member of Saint Aloysius Church, an active member of the Ushers Club, active member of the Romulus J.C.'s, the Romulus Rotary, and he also served for numerous terms on the Romulus Planning Commission.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wasworth, for memorial resolution. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
The next memorial resolution I would like is for Mr. Ron Dick. And, um, I found out a little bit of information about him when I was speaking to the family. He's actually a former deputy clerk under Linda Choak. Uh, he coached Romulus Little League for decades. He was a volunteer for Romulus football. And I think most of us in the community knew him as a volunteer in the schools. He was the head of the booster club for years.
Support.
Was that this six, the one that was six, about six feet six?
Yes. And, um, his wife told me, I don't, I don't remember them, but my husband remembers this, that he once played Uncle Sam in the Fourth of July Parade, when they had a Fourth of July Parade here in Romulus.
Wow.
Mr. Barton?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wasworth?
If I could, uh, if I could, uh, make a couple of comments about Ron. I knew him quite well, and in his last few years, he had some very difficult medical issues and he dealt him, he dealt with him the best that he could, and may, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth. Uh, Ms. Webb, uh, okay. Who, uh, supported that?
I did.
Oh, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for memorial resolution for Mr. Dick. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. The Chair at this time now is going to recognize Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two resolutions as well, if I can get support. First one is a memorial resolution for Mr. Wayneard Shreves.
Support.
Mr. Shreves was a longtime resident of Romulus. He and his family were very active in our community. They are a wonderful, wonderful family.
Thank you. That's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for memorial resolution. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. And the second memorial resolution, if I can get support, is for Mrs. Louise Green Vale. She resided here in Romulus for many, many years, and some of you may have attended school with her children, and especially the one who is Dora Green. Um, and she was a very nice lady, but she had been ill for quite a while.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for memorial resolution. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Okay. Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, to approve of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Or Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Apologize, I was muted. All right. Uh, next on the agenda is number five, the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Audience at Home. Um, quick quote I brought, it ties into really item five C, uh, which I appreciate everyone's effort on. It goes as this. Leadership requires the courage to make decisions that will benefit the next generation. And so not only are we doing that with the budget and with the services, but making sure we have a sustainable, um, retirement plan and for both current and future retirees. So I'll talk more about that under five C. Uh, quick note, I wanted to mention that based on our, um, host agreement that we, um, entered into last year with the five communities for thirty-fourth District Court, um, part of that agreement was to keep communication going. Uh, because of COVID, we actually had a Zoom meeting last week, uh, with the judges, with Steve Hitchcock, myself, and representatives from all those, uh, communities. Uh, one thing that did come up, and I wanted to offer to our electeds, is that if there's, uh, interest in, uh, maybe a tour of that new building, um, we have to kind of watch the size, a number, but if you are interested, please let, uh, my office know, uh, and as we schedule those, we'll try to do some walkthroughs, uh, to see the new facility. Um, and I do also have some action items tonight, if I could get into those. Uh, first before you is, uh, item number A. Uh, this is a recommendation that came from Mary Dreward, our DDA Director. Uh, the request is to concur with the administration and approve the proposed fiscal year, um, two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three agreement, uh, between the City of Romulus, Wayne County, to continue our urban county program and to make funds available, uh, for the community development block grant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
I'll make that a motion for amended and restated urban country, county development corporation agreement.
Support.
CDBG.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wasworth, for reinstated urban county development corporate agreement, CDBG. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would like to know. I, I, I noticed that, um, the document states that we haven't, um, agreed to this, uh, particular, uh, program for the last three years. So does this program, um, include, like, if seniors have issues with, like, a hot water tank, issues with their roof? Is that money, will that money be there for, uh, those seniors or low-income residents in the city?
I have, I know Mary is on the phone for, um, Maria Lambert. My understanding is those past services are still available with this as well. Mary, are you there? Thought she was with us. I'm not sure if she's on, Ellen, if you can see or meet, see if she's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Audience. Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, comment on this. Yes. Um, Councilwoman Williams, this would continue as status quo, as the program that we've had established, it'll continue as is. Um, just to kind of comment on the, um, on the comment that you had made in regards to, because we haven't done this, um, in a couple of years. This was just, as you can recall, there's been some administrative changes at the county, and this is just kind of some things that they're cleaning up and bringing it to our attention that, um, we haven't, it's supposed to be every year. So that's why you're seeing this now. We haven't had action on this since two thousand and fourteen. But this would continue our programs as is and would continue with the senior services program.
Okay, with, well, what I was speaking on, it used to be, because I know with the, with the program with the Wayne County, there's a limited amount that actually goes out, uh, for the residents, which is, if I'm not mistaken, I've spoke to Maria Lambert before, the five thousand dollars will have to be split up amongst whoever, uh, qualified for that. So will it be more than five thousand available for the residents that qualify?
So currently this program, the way the county has changed this program is our senior services is we are allotted twenty thousand dollars for each fiscal year. So that is used to provide, um, the services that, um, our senior center does as regards to helping fix a resident, a senior low-income, um, resident with a water heater or a leaky shower faucet, or, um, cutting their grass or shoveling their, their driveways. Um, one of the changes in the program, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but there had been a change in regards to the way things were for, um, the allotment, I believe, for the five thousand that you are referring to. We are still able to, um, help our residents apply for that. That is now all done strictly through the county. So we facilitate the application process, um, kind of get the information from the residents, and then we then give that to the county, and then that becomes through the county and the resident to do any, um, improvements for that five thousand dollars.
So this program have always, have this program always included HUD in the federal government? Because I noticed as I was reading through it, it stated that the, uh, money would also come from the federal government. Is that correct?
That is, yes. HUD is the federal, yes.
Right. Okay, so the, the amount outside of what the senior citizen get for their services is still, is it five thousand? Or is it more, since the program has, has changed?
I do not have that figure if that has been changed or not. I, my apologies, I would have to look into that, but I'm, I'm happy to get that information for you.
Thank you.
But I do know, I can, yes, I'm sorry. I can, um, let you know that, yes, our senior services program, we still have the twenty thousand dollars. But on the other funding, I will check on that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next item is a recommendation from Roberto Scappaticci, our Director of Public Works, and Stephen Hitchcock, our City Attorney. Uh, this wants to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution to establish requests for funding to designate an agent, attest in existence of a fund to commit to implementing a maintenance program, and that's for our Huron River Drive non-motorized pathway, uh, that you're aware of from North Line to Grant. So this would be for the maintenance.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion for the Huron River Drive Non-Motorized Pathway Funding and Maintenance Program.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for the Huron River Non-Motorized Pathway Funding and Maintenance Program. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Abdo?
I wondered who would be in charge of the maintenance. Are we hiring this out, or are we doing this internally?
Uh, we are. Uh, Roberto is on the line if you want to get any more details, but it'd be our responsibilities.
Be in-house? Okay. That's all I wanted.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Wasworth?
I guess it would be for Roberto. Uh, we do the maintenance, but don't we get reimbursed by the state for doing it?
No, not, not in this particular application. Uh, the type of maintenance we would be doing out there is snow removal, maybe cut the grass, you know, keep it aesthetically pleasing. Uh, what they, what they want us to do is not take the grant funding and turn our back to the sidewalk in the facility and let it get, you know, cracked up, potholed, faulted, where people can't use it anymore. At that point, we could patch it, do some smaller stuff our, work ourselves, and potentially go for additional monies to maintain it, uh, if it needs to be, you know, rehabilitated.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
If there's no more of the questions, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. Um, the next one that's before you is item C, uh, and this is the one I led off with. We've had a lot of discussion. We've had, um, reports and letters from committee members. Uh, this request is to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution for the retiree healthcare modifications. And I, and I want to make sure I thank the committee, uh, of retirees that gave input, uh, and wrote letters and gave recommendations. Uh, got to give a big shout out to Kevin Lozen, uh, Steve Hitchcock, Diane Digman from, uh, Blue Cross. Um, really a team effort coming together to try to make sure that we are, uh, keeping the value of the retirees', uh, healthcare, but again, keeping a sustainable plan for our future.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution for the retiree healthcare modification.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wasworth, for the resolution for retirees' healthcare modifications. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next request is a, uh, recommendation from Rose Sudan, our Senior Service Director and Legal Counsel. Uh, this is another grant opportunity. You've heard a lot about, uh, grants that we've been going after and applying for. Uh, this request is to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached agreements for municipal credit and community credits on CARES funding and contracts for the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. Uh, this particular one was, uh, eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Chairman, I'll move for the smart and municipal agreement for the fiscal year of twenty, um, twenty-one.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for the municipality agreement fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Any discussion?
Yes, to the Chair.
Ms. Tally?
Yeah, I just want to give shout-outs to Rose again. Always looking out for our seniors, always taking care of our seniors. So I just want to give her a shout-out. Um, we got all these, uh, credits that we've always gotten, but this CARES money is new money. So thank you for your efforts, Rose, for all you do for our seniors. And then just all the grant money we've gotten in place. Everybody's been working diligently hard getting, going after the grant money. So, uh, just shout-out to everybody, um, who's done that. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of off course, but even Captain Monte last week, uh, Ellen, things with the clerk. Everybody's out there working hard to get us grant money for our city, and I just think you guys have done a remarkable job. But we're roses right now. Good job, Rose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Um, the next one is item E. Uh, what you have before you is the, um, request that came from Gary Harris, Purchasing Director, Vern Morris. Uh, this is a request to concur with the administration, extend agreement from RFQ sixteen slash seventeen oh nine with Munitrex LLC. Uh, this is a three-year period from December one, uh, two thousand and twenty through November thirtieth of twenty-three. Uh, the per year is five thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. These funds have been verified and budgeted out of Technology Services, a maintenance service expense account that is listed.
To the Chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and extend the agreement for RFQ sixteen slash seventeen dash oh nine with Munitrex LLC for three-year period from December first, two thousand and twenty through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred, five thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars per year. And I do have a question afterward.
Do we get a second?
Support.
Okay, second. The motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the LLC Financial Data and Analytical Tool Software, three-year extensions. Discussion by Ms. Tally?
Yeah, just a quick question, mayor or whoever else, I'm not sure, but, um, with the implementation, and I know we've been using this, what, what, what reports would council see that uses this data? What, what, what information, what data, what reports do we see? What, what we, this utilizing this, this software? I was just curious.
No, that's a great question. Actually, one of the things that we're going to be doing is coming before you shortly with a, uh, kind of an up-to-date look at the budget. Remember, we passed the budget, we were early in COVID. So we have what's called a city scorecard, uh, and we had an old format that we used in finances, utilized some great tools and charts and graphs that kind of put numbers in a different perspective. So those are going to be presented to you in that study session, um, a- along with some updated information on the court as well. So, um, it was kind of refreshing to see some of the ideas. There's a wealth of information we use internally, but specifically for council, I think you're really going to like this.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
The most, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Number six is the clerk's report. And again, good evening, Council, Mayor Burcroft, and to all those who have joined, um, this meeting this evening. I have two action items under the clerk's report. Uh, six A one is the, the study session request from the Building Department Director, uh, Robert McCray. And he is requesting a fifteen-minute study session for November the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty at six o'clock PM. And this is to discuss an amendment to section eight dash twenty of the City Code of Ordinance. The date and time is available for the study session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for a study session request from the Building Department for eleven twenty-three twenty at six PM. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
This is to discuss, uh, for, um, any type of building, uh, misdemeanor, uh, a civil infraction to, to be a civil infraction or a misdemeanor, in any type of ticket from the Building Department?
I'm not certain, uh, Councilwoman.
Did we go through this before?
You would have to ask Director, uh, uh, Mr. McCray. I'm, I'm not certain, um, what the amendment is about.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, the, currently the ordinance gave our inspectors the authority to, uh, um, issue citations to compel compliance in areas where they couldn't get, achieve compliance, and it requires, uh, issuing two civil infractions before they're allowed to issue a misdemeanor, and a misdemeanor having more teeth, easier to get code enforcement. So the study session was to talk about the success they've had, um, with this program and some ways that we can streamline it, uh, with supportive counsel, in, in order to get some of these, uh, properties. And it'll give the, uh, the building inspector the ability to go to a misdemeanor charge instead of having to write two civil infractions, um, if they, if they deem this as necessary action, uh, at that time to compel compliance.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Uh, yes, and I'd also have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, in regards to this, I am looking forward, and I'm sure my colleague, um, Councilwoman Williams is looking forward to this study session, because I do have questions, but right now we're on schedule in this study session. But most definitely, yes, we need this study session.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Um, the last action item before I, um, um. Ask council to take action, uh, we just wanted to let everyone know to please speak directly to your microphone, councilwoman Tal- Tally, it's a little difficult hearing you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just getting the message from our tech technicians there. Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry. Thank you, council. Uh, item, uh, six B, this is another study session request.
And this time it's from, uh, our city planner Carol Mays. And she is requesting a one-hour study session for November the twenty-third at six fifteen PM. And this is to discuss a, uh, conceptual development plan for two hundred acres of property on the west side of Vining Road of E Course Road. Uh, the date and time is available for the study session.
Do the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, uh, for the study session request for the city code of ordinance amendment. For the two hundred acres of property on the west side of Vining Road, south of E Course Road.
Support.
Support. The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for the study session request. From our city planner Carol Mays. For eleven twenty-three twenty at six fifteen. Any discussion? No discussion. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Counsel, I have a letter that was, um, sent to me and, and was, uh, asked if I would read it to you all and into the record. And this letter is from, uh, Bronson Bell, president of the American Progressive Association. It reads as follows, dear honorable elected officials and staff. On behalf of the American Progressive Association, I would like to thank the city, the city of Romulus, elected officials and administration. For your gracious and thoughtful efforts in beautifying the north end of Romulus with the addition of new sidewalks. The new sidewalks are not only pleasing to the eye, they po- they positively impact residential safety. It is those attentive and responsive actions that make the city of Romulus a wonderful place to live. I do request that this letter of appreciation be read and to the record. Gratefully submitted, Bronson Bell, president of the American Progressive Association.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. And lastly, um, before I close out, I have a few announcements, uh, with regards to the election. Uh, it's one week away. I'm looking forward to November the fourth. Uh, we've been very busy. I'd like to, um, just publicly acknowledge my team in the clerk's office. You know, we have a new team and they're amazing and they're working hard and putting in the hours and the efforts so that our elections, uh, will run well. Um, and that all voters will be able to vote. Um, we're processing absentee ballots. As of this evening, we have mailed out a total of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three ballots. Um, as of, I believe it was probably six thirty this evening when I ran my report. We have received five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight ballots have been returned, which is, uh, seventy-two, uh, point twenty-six percent. So that's pretty good. And we still have a week. Um, so, um, great job to the city of Romulus and again to my staff. Um, we have some extended hours I would like to announce. Um. From Tuesday to Thursday, Tuesday through Thursday, this week, we're open our regular office hours from eight to four. On Friday, we will be open from eight to five o'clock PM. That is the last day that, uh, to request a, an absentee ballot by mail. On Saturday, Halloween Day, um, the clerk's office will be open from eight to four. Residents can come in and request an absentee ballot, and they will be able to take that ballot home with them. On Monday. November the second, uh, the clerk's office will be opened, uh, it's, it's regular hours, eight to four o'clock PM. That is the last day that residents or registered voters, um, can request an absentee ballot. The ballot must be voted here in the clerk's office. Um, they will not be able to take that ballot home with them. Also, on Monday, uh, November the second, uh, the last opportunity, if residents need, uh, to spoil their ballots. For any reason, they have until ten o'clock that Monday before the election. After that, they will not be able to spoil their ballots. Um. On election day, of course, the polls will open, um, at seven and close it at eight o'clock. I want to announce, um, that if, uh, residents should not, uh, attempt to turn in their absentee ballots at the polls or at the precincts. Um, in the past, residents would come and, you know, they'd just drop their ballots off there at the precincts. We're not being accepting those ballots. Uh, we're encouraging, everyone must, uh, drop their ballots off in, uh, the drop boxes. We have two drop box locations. Uh, one in front of city hall and a second in front of our senior center. Um, again, at this late date, if you have not returned your absentee ballot, uh, we are strongly encouraging that you please utilize our drop box. Uh, our drop boxes. Um, I've been in communication, I'm working with the post office, um, and what they're saying, you know, it's about. Three days, give it three days for the mail. It could be three to five, but it's not guaranteed. And they're even encouraging, uh, for residents. If, uh, to utilize the drop boxes. Um, so again, they are available to all of our residents. Um, and also, we are in the, the window, uh, for, uh, voters, uh, first-time voters who need to register to vote. Um. In order to participate in this election, you must vote in person at, I'm sorry, you must register here at the clerk's office. Um, if you register at the secretary of state or send in a mail-in registration, you will not be able to, uh, vote in this, uh, in the November election. So you must come to the clerk's office to register to vote. You must have your photo ID and proof of residency. If your, um, address is on your, uh, driver's license or your Michigan, um, ID, uh, i- identification card. That will suffice, that will satisfy, um, that requirement. If you do not have a driver's license, um, you must show proof of residency. A bank statement, a pay stub, a utility bill. But again, we must have proof of residency so that we can register you. Um, there is also same-day registration, um, on election day. Um, there was proposal that passed in two thousand and eighteen. So those voters on election day, um, that come in or those residents who would like to register, they may do so, um, on election day. And they will be offered, um, uh, the opportunity to vote an absentee ballot, or they may go to the precincts. Um, again, I'd like to just thank everybody for their support. We're working long hours. And, um, we're determined to make it work as all other clerks in the state of Michigan. Um, but again, it's, uh, it's, it's a team effort. Thank you to the administration. Uh, thank you again to my staff and all, even all of the election inspectors. I want to just say. We have some great people who have stepped up to volunteer, residents, um, we even have people from, uh, uh, voters or, or residents from, um. Plymouth came in to volunteer to help us. So we're very fortunate and I feel very good about, um, the election. Although we're exhausted, but I just, I, I have a lot of confidence in the Romulus residents and, uh, for us to have a good day. I can't say as far as, um. If there will be long lines. Uh, I think the long lines will pretty much be your wait time because we will be, um, practicing social distancing. So we want everyone, please, wear your mask, uh, be prepared, uh, for social distancing. If you do not have masks, we will have them made available, um, for you. Um, so the wait time will be pretty much just processing voters as we make sure we're implementing, um, CDC guidelines. Um, and with that, I want to say, uh, thank you again to everyone. And, uh, the next council meeting, I want to thank council because last month you adopted a resolution to move the city council meeting. Um, from November second to November the fifth. So the next council meeting will be Thursday, November the fifth at seven thirty PM. And with that, that concludes the clerk's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, clerk, deputy clerk, and listening audience. I do not have anything to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. Press star nine from your phone or the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Press star six from your phone or the microphone icon from the meeting app to unmute. After you have been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon approval of the chairperson. And again, citizens may also submit written comments, um, or questions by, uh, email. To publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public, uh, portion of, public comment portion of the meeting. Okay, we do have one raised hand to speak. Okay, um, and I'm going to ask the person with the last four digits of one nine nine five. If you would, uh, unmute, you may speak at this time. Okay. We're as- asking them to unmute. The last four digits of one nine nine five, please unmute your phone and you may speak now. If you've called in, press star six on, from your phone. There you go.
Okay, hi, this is Gail Mack. I have, um, two questions. I think it was you, Eva, that said about Mr. Shreve passed. Is, and a lot of sons and dads have the same name. Would that be the sixty-eight-year-old Mr. Shreve? Or would that be maybe his dad or uncle?
That is the dad.
Oh, wonderful. I'm so relieved.
Thank you, Gail.
Okay, and second thing, my brother witnessed this. The, um, trash truck came along, waste management on his normal day. And dumped the trash into, you know, the front bin of the truck. Put down the barrel, picked up the recycle and dumped that into the same trash truck. Then he, my brother was thinking, what? So he watched and the guy did that down the road also. It wasn't just a one-time. Oh, my God, what did I just do? So does anybody know about that? Are we still recycling?
Yes, we are still recycling. I, I don't know if Roberto's still on, but I know when the recycle plant, uh, is not operating, they will do that procedure just during that time.
Okay, so that must be the, what was going on. Okay.
Yes, we are still fully engaged in the recycle program.
Okay, and to the city. Is there a different rate for dumping? Is that why we are encouraged to, um, recycle? Alongside of, of course, saving the environment and the room in the, in the pit? Is there a different rate that we pay a lesser rate?
Financial benefits to the recycling program. Um, we'd be happy to share that with you. Uh, when we entered into a ten-year agreement back, and I think it was fourteen, uh, there are financial benefits to the city to do that. Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, and I can elaborate on that if you, if you want me to.
Thanks for.
Yeah, there is a different rate. We pay like one-third the cost of trash removal to recycle. And, uh, when, when the recycling commodity is doing well and there's a demand for it, the city actually gets. Uh, a share of the revenue back in return. And then when, uh, when the, the commodity is not doing as well, uh, we, we don't get that return. But there is a big cost difference between dumping the, uh, the trash and, and taking care of the recycling. I will tell you that depending on when, uh, the recycling and the trash were dumped in the same bin. Uh, due to the pandemic, the recycling plant, the sorting plant did close down. It was shut down and it stayed shut down for a number of months.
Okay, well, this was last week or the previous week. It was just very recently. And we were just wondering, so there must have been something going on at the plant at that, that day or that time.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody looks pretty tonight.
Thank you, Gail.
Now, how do I, um, mute myself back out? I don't know.
Just press, um, star six.
There you go.
Okay, great. Um, Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised or no one else has, and has indicated that they would like to speak. Uh, during this portion of the meeting, and we have not received any emails under public comment.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, then we'll close that out.
Go note. Okay, uh, I didn't know if Councilwoman Webb had something to say or?
Uh, no, I can hear everyone, but I'm, I'm gone for some reason. I'm, I'm going to try to get back in. I don't know what button I pushed. Okay, here I am.
Um, number nine is unfinished business.
Uh, John?
Yes, Mr. Wasworth?
If I can, uh, this would be to Mayor Burcraft. Mayor, uh, about a month ago, I, I asked about the Veterans Memorial. And some type of a timeline, when it's going to be started, when, when it's going to be finished. And nothing came back to me. Could you look into that for us, please?
I've asked. I know there's a committee. Bob McCray is on. Bob, can you comment on that real quick? I know there was, uh, some recent discussion.
Absolutely, there is a committee. Uh, we have a design on it. We are expanding a little bit and it should be installed in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Um, there's been a press release on it and some different things on the city's webpage and Facebook page as well. Um, but yes, uh, spring of twenty twenty-one.
So that's when it's going to be, uh, up and done, or is it going to be started, Bob, or what's the?
Yeah, it, it should be installed in spring of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any more unfinished business? Number ten is new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty dash twenty.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pick, make a motion that we pay warrant twenty dash twenty in the following amounts. General fund, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Major street fund, one hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Local street fund, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and seventeen cents. Public safety fund, fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Cap- uh, cable TV, five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Merriman Road Special Assessment, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, let's see, uh, street lighting fund, forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and four cents. Oakwood Sad, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Garbage and, uh, rubbish collection fund, one hundred eighty-two thousand, four dollars and sixty-one cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, thirty-four thousand, forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Nine eleven service fund, eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. NARC forfeiture state, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Library fund, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. DDA, nine thousand, four hundred dollars and seventy cents. Tifa District Two, one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Beverly Road Special Assessment District, eighty-four thousand, eighty dollars. CIP Bonds Court Building, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. E Course and Vining Capital Improvement Bonds, one million, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Court Building Construction Fund, four hundred, fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Vining Road Extension, the E Course. Binding road extension, the E-course construction, one thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars. Water and sewer fund, nine hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Motor vehicle, two hundred nine thousand, four hundred three dollars and ninety-three cents. Technology services, fourteen thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Retiree insurance benefits, two hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Revolving fund, three thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. Current tax, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seven, seven hundred five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Delinquent personal property fund, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Payroll fund, two hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Total of all funds, six million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
What was that?
I did, Mr. Barton.
Oh, okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty dash twenty for six million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Or Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, warrant number twenty dash twenty will be paid.
Number twelve is communication. Chair?
Yes, uh...
I, I have a few things tonight.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
First of all, you know, this weekend, um, is going to be the end of the month, Halloween, coming up here, and if you don't have anywhere to pass out your treats and your goodies and, um, or to bring your trick-or-treaters, the VFW, uh, fifty, ninety-five, sixty-eight, over on Huron River Drive there at Hanan Road, is doing a trunk-or-treat. So, um, that is going on from three to five on Saturday. So come maybe just a few minutes early and get set up and, uh, support the VFW there and, uh, pass out some candy, bring your tr- trick-or-treaters. If your community isn't passing out candy or, you know, doing the trick-or-treat things for the kids, it's always a lot of fun. And you can social distance there, you know, everyone has a way of, um, making sure everybody's safe. So, I encourage you to come out and still have a good time. You know, it's been a rough year and we're getting into the holiday time, but there's still things out there we can still do and do safely. Um, another thing is, you know, October, we've been, uh, kinda consumed with the census, um, but October actually is fire prevention, uh, month, and some of us are wearing our red, um, out of the support of, of that. But, you know, um, November first, we rolled back the clocks an hour, and that's always a good time to remember to check your smoke detectors, um, your carbon monoxide, um, protectors in the house. Change your batteries whether you think you need to or not is always a good, um, gauge, you know, every six months, when we fall back an hour, when we spring it ahead an hour. But that's, saves so many lives just having those smoke detectors in your house. Um, and so I'm encouraging everyone this weekend, on top of, um, you know, enjoying Halloween, uh, check, check those things in your house. Make sure they're working properly. And, um, if you need help with that, you can always, uh, contact the fire department and they can, you know, direct you as to how to make sure those are, um, working properly. Um, other than that, um, if you were riding around the city over the weekend on Saturday, you would have seen some trees being planted at the Mary Ann Banks Park and, and at the Historical Society. And I'd like to give a big shout-out to the city, of course, and the DTE Foundation and Real Life of Michigan for sponsoring, uh, twelve trees that were planted. And we had volunteers that came out from Medline, um, which is a Romulus business, and they deal with hea- healthcare products and so on and so forth. And they had about twenty-five volunteers out this weekend and, um, helped plant those trees. And, uh, you know, it just, um, give everything a, a better look, you know, spruce up our parks. And, you know, we really appreciate all the help we get when anything gets donated, and especially having the volunteers come out from local companies within the city. So, you know, a big shout-out to them. Thank you so much. Um, you know, we really appreciate trying to keep our parks up. And, uh, last but not least, uh, um, we have a new foreman over at the DPW. Uh, they've been going through a process for the last few months. It's, it's not anything that is, is done nonchalantly whenever we, uh, have different positions like that open. And I'd like to congratulate Jerry Frayer for getting that position as foreman. You know, he's a, a Romulus resident, he's been a long-time city employee here. He's, uh, worked diligently, and I, I'm sure that he's gonna do a great job. And again, congratulations, Jerry, for, um, becoming our, our newest foreman over there at the DPW. And other than that, I think that's all I have tonight, and just ask everybody to be safe out there. It's gonna start getting, um, darker earlier, and even though the kids, um, are not standing out at the bus stations here, uh, a lot of us drive out of the city, um, to work other places or just, you know, to go other places. Just, just watch out for people walking and what have you, 'cause we sure have a lot, a lot more darkness out there now. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
John?
Yes, Mr. Wasworth?
Um, if I can, uh, we probably should have done this in the first part of October, but, you know, October is, uh, cancer breast awareness. And, um, you know, people on this board have been touched by this, and, uh, we should keep in our prayers the women and men that are fighting this disease right now, and the women and men that have fought and won, and also the women and men that fought and didn't win, and we should keep in our prayers. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
I, I probably shouldn't have put this, but I don't consider it new business, and this is for Mary Drewer and also Bob McCray. I know it's a little late in the season, but the shrubs on Merriman, they're terrible. They're getting bigger and bigger. Two years ago, I can say, the Economic Development, uh, Department, they took care of that through the DPW. Now, there's this huge shrub, and when you pull out, see, uh, I was coming from, I was crossing over Merriman, uh, heading south. And when you go to make that left in front, you know, across from the Public Credit Service Union, you can't see. Now, I know it's getting darker, so I'll be able to see with the car lights, but you cannot see. I don't know what's wrong with that shrub. It has grown, uh, it's huge after two years, because they did take care of it. But I guess my concern is, I know that there will be more than likely lights out there for the holiday, and then there's just more distraction. If, if someone could just go out there tomorrow and get it trimmed back, because it is a danger. It really is. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Williams?
Yes. I would just like to, uh, touch on, uh, the letter that, uh, Mr. Bell sent in, uh, concerning the sidewalks, uh, that off of, uh, Van Born. It actually looks like a whole new area. Uh, I really thank, um, the administration and Roberto for working hard to, uh, uh, bring us sidewalks, and, and I pray that, uh, we continue to, uh, bring even more sidewalks, uh, to the north end because they're, uh, well-needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, keep in mind, we have been off a week. So I got a couple of things as well. Uh, first of all, just to piggyback off Councilwoman Roscoe about the new foreman, and I just wanted to throw out there, out there with that, that the foreman testing was conducted through an independent professional testing company. Um, so just to keep that out there for the public, that it was done through, uh, independent company for the foreman position, and congratulations to Jerry Frayer as well. And then a couple of other things, too. Um, there's a survey out, survey out there that Tanya Colfield wants us to take part in for the residents of Romulus. It's the Twenty Twenty Romulus Parks and Recreation Master Plan Community Involvement Survey. Um, what, they just want the thoughts on how, about parks and its facilities in the city of Romulus, so we are encouraging our residents to please participate in this survey. Um, like, you know, Councilwoman Williams was saying, we're doing the sidewalk. What are the things we need to see done? And this is all related to Tanya and the parks and stuff, but we need the community and residents' involvement in this process to see what can we do to better our city. So, please take a part of Tanya's survey for the Romulus Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Community Involvement Survey, so, um, thus far, residents, please get involved with that. Uh, the other thing is, too, a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, uh, we had, uh, uh, one of our residents, I think it was Tony Heimberger, brought up about a homeless man on Ma- Merriman. I want to thank the city for their attention to this matter, um, and just for even Mr. Heimberger bringing that issue up, um, and just, um, okay, just working together, being, you know, working together, each other as a team. Um, again, I want to shout out to Captain Josh Monty, I wanted to do with at that last meeting. But we have this MIDC grant that helps people who can't represent themselves in the judicial system that helps them, you know, get representation for that. So it's just helping peoples, you know, when they can't represent themselves in the judicial system, we have this MIDC grant to, um, give them the representation they need. So, again, just pulling all this grant stuff together, I mean, every department in here is working together, bringing grants together for our city. So I just, again, shout out to the administration board, that's helping out with this grant money that's coming in. Um, and then also, um, even the clerk's office, this grant money they have received, you know, just to make our elections safe. And then even on that note, they say, yeah, but I've been wearing my mask. Thank you, Mr. Barton. I meant to shout to you about a while ago about my prayer. Vote and stand. We must ex- exercise our right to vote and, um, and it's just been a great, I just love it. I get a lot of attention from it, 'cause I wear it with my tee-shirt that you gave me and my mask. And I've ordered my mom and my sister one, and they're wearing them too. We gotta represent and get out here and vote. Um, they love it. Uh, my sister works in the shop, she gets a lot of clientele, and so she's representing well as far as, um, let's get out there, pray, vote, and stand. So thank you, Mr. Barton, for giving me, um, access to this, um, 'cause it's a very great tool to really advertise for voting, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Oh, absolutely. And then, on the another note, um, I just want to say, as, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Roscoe said, you know, um, I shout out Ms. Abdo, thank you. You know, I said last week about the census, it was going through the end of, uh, uh, October. Um, she called me and said they put it to a halt again. I'm, you know, I'm sick of these people playing with my emotions with the census. They know how this is important to me. So thank you, Ms. Abdo, for letting me know that it has been halted once again. Um, it, it's very important, but, you know, it is what it is. But I want to thank everybody, again, their participation with it, um, but it has been, it has been halted. It was in a prop halt to the census, so, but again, just thank everybody for their participation. And then, um, on the last thing I do want to put out there, too, I just want everybody to please, 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 take note of our school district. We have a new superintendent in place, and there's some impressive things going on in our district. I'm telling you, we better take note of our school district. There are some things happening. We have a very impressive superintendent, and we better watch out because we have some things happening in our school district. So, take note and be tuned. Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
John?
Yes, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I, I, I would be wrong not to say anything. I was listening to our clerk, uh, our honorable clerk's report, and to go back into history and look at the numbers of people that voted total, and for the report that our clerk gave, those numbers are astronomical of people that have already voted. I mean, I, I, I take my hat off to our, our clerk's department for doing such a wonderful job and staying on top of, uh, all the new rules and regulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, you've saved so many people from making excuses not to vote for it being too cold or the roads is messed up, uh, thank you so much for, uh, our numbers to be so high. Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barton, one more quick thing, too. Uh, also, Tanya's got the Goodfellas going on again this year, so we can give donations to help with the Goodfellas that helps the families in our city. Uh, just give a shout-out for that. She got a couple of things going on with the survey and with the Goodfellas, so let's just keep that in mind and help out while we can. It's, it's that season. It's that season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Is there any more communication?
I just said the Lions won. Three and three.
Congratulations, John.
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman woman, for those, uh, uh, Williams, for those kind, encouraging words. Um, yeah, and you have to say, "Go Lions", right? All right. Um, well, with that, if there is no more communication, that takes us to number thirteen, which is adjournment, but before you adjourn, I just want to remind everyone that the next council meeting will be Thursday, November the fifth, at seven thirty PM. An adjournment would be in order, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Adjourn.
A motion by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for adjournment. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, and thank you.